Good evening. Chair calls to order Legislative Session Day 24-015. I would ask you to join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Guthrie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, for the prayer today, I'm going to do something a little different. Since Mother's Day was Sunday, I want to honor the mothers with a little something that I came across that was questioning in a school, and all the questions were about moms, and all the answers came from second graders. So I think the moms are going to like this, but some of the dads may not. But I think it's just a little bit different to do something to honor the moms, as we did. My wife's mother, we took her to her favorite place to eat, which was the diner on Route 40 on Plaskett Highway in Ebenezer Road. No matter where we take her, she always says, "Well, this ain't as good as the diner." So Sunday was not only Mother's Day, but it was her birthday, and she was 98. So we're keeping our fingers crossed we can keep her going for a couple more years so we can honor her when she turns 100. But I want to share these with you. And this was why God made moms. Brilliant answers came from second grade children. And so the teacher came up with the questions, and there's their answers. And the first one was, "Why did God make mothers?" One, she only knows who, she's the only one who knows where the Scotch tape is. Two, mostly to clean the house. Third student, to help us out when there's, to help us out there when we got borned. How did God make mothers? They use dirt and just a little like for the rest of us. Two, magic plus superpowers and a lot of string. God made my mom just like he made me. He just used bigger parts. What ingredients are mothers made of? One, God makes mothers out of clouds and angel hair and everything nice in the world and one drop of mean. Two, they had to get their start from men's bones, then mostly use string, I think. Why did God give you your mother and not some other mom? Well, because we're related. Two, God knew she liked me a lot more than the other people moms like me. Question, what kind of a little girl was your mom? My mom was always been my mom and none of the other stuff. Two, I don't know because I wasn't there, but my guess would be pretty bossy. Three, they say she used to be nice. Question, why did mom need to know about dad before she married him? This is a good one, for his last name. Two, she had to know his background, like, is he a crook? Does he drink beer? Does he make $800 a year? Did he say no to drugs and yes to chores? Why did mom marry your dad? One, my dad makes the best spaghetti in the world, and my mom eats a lot. Two, she got too old to do anything else with him. Three, my grandma says mom didn't have her thinking cap on at the time. Who's the boss of your house? Mom doesn't want to be boss, but she has to because dad's such a goofball. Mom's a boss. You can tell by room inspection, because she sees all the stuff under my bed without eyes. Three, I guess mom is, but only because she has a lot more to do than dad. What's the difference between moms and dads? Moms work, moms work at work and work at home, and dads only go to work at work. Two, moms know how to talk to teachers without scaring them. Three, dads are taller and stronger, but moms have all the real power because that's who you got to ask if you want to go to sleep over a friend's house. Poor moms have magic, and they make you feel better without medicine. What does your mom do to her spare time? Mothers don't have any spare time. Two, to hear her tell it, she pays all the bills all day long. Question, what would it take to make your mom perfect? Oh, the inside, she's already perfect. Outside, I think she's kind of plastic surgery. Two, dye, you know, dye her hair. I'd dye it maybe blue. If you could change one thing about your mom, what would it be? She'd be this weird thing about me keeping my room clean. I'd get rid of that. Two, I'd make mom smarter. Then she would know it was my sister who did it and not me. Three, I would like to get her, for her to get rid of those invisible eyes in the back of her head. So I thought I'd share that with you as a prayer for all the moms on Mother's Day, and my mother-in-law, if we're not conveniently having both on the same day. With that, we'll say amen.
Counsel, may I have general consent to move to item number 14 on the agenda and return to floor thereafter?
Don't move.
Thank you. Agenda item number 14, new business, council contract, legislative drafter. May I have a motion?
Counsel President, I move to approve Mary-Kate Herbig as legislative drafter.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Herbeck as our legislative drafter. Is there any discussion? And if I may, I'd like to start. Counsel, as you know, we started advertising for our legislative drafter September of last year, and we had a couple of applicants apply. And we weren't sure exactly what our schedule would be for them, and I think we refined that. And I think that we're blessed in a sense that we were able to have Ms. Herbeck step up to the plate. She comes to us with 30 years' experience working with Harford County Government, 20 years' experience on this county council, starting as a legislative drafter, moving up to a assistant council attorney, up to senior council attorney, and then moving on to the administration across the street as a senior assistant county attorney. So I'm very pleased to say that she was presented to the personnel committee. Personnel committee agreed thoroughly that she should be brought before the full council. And with that, here we are. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly glad to second that motion and work with her a lot in my prior 12 years. I can't remember if we ever had a fight, but I was trying to think about it the other night. I said, "We must have had a fight about something," but I wasn't totally sure because she always had this way, if you got excited, to calm you down. So certainly it's going to be great to have her aboard.
Mr. Pennman.
Mary-Kate, welcome aboard. We have never had a fight, and I don't think we will. I look forward to working with you and just kind of pushing this council forward. So it's not going to be an easy task, though, but welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Janger-Dano.
So I, as a new councilman, I guess six years ago, I had the opportunity to sit and work with you a little bit, and certainly appreciated your knowledge, and I was able to ask you questions. And part of that's in learning some of the stuff that obviously I did not know, and you were very helpful, very knowledgeable, very courteous, and always available. So I wholeheartedly look forward to working with you and glad to, well, in a minute, hopefully you're approved and come onboard.
Thank you, Mr. Janger-Dano. Mr. Riley.
Yes, I'd just like to say I've met with the Human Resource Director over this, and she highly recommends you, Mary-Kay. Apparently you've worked with her in the past, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Sodles.
Welcome, Mary-Kate. I look forward to working with you.
Mr. Bennett.
I'm just really happy to have this position filled. It's unfortunate that for so long the council didn't have a legislative drafter, and I know that made the work of Mr. Kearney so much harder. So I think this will be great for us. It'll also be great for whoever is our next council attorney, so that as a council, we can work more efficiently and have a better process for getting legislation ready. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I believe that's it. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
With great pleasure and honor, aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janger-Dano.
Absolutely aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the contract for legislative drafter is hereby approved. Congratulations.
Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations, Havering Grace High School Robotics Team. I'd like to welcome the robotics team. Mr. Bennett? Mr. Pennman?
Is this where we cue up Mr. Robotics?
You're going to read.
Read? He's going to read. Whereas two competition teams from the Havering Grace High School Gears and Spears Robotics Club advanced to the March 3, 2024 Maryland State Vex Robotics Competition. And whereas each team designed and built a robot that was capable of moving three-sided tri balls around a 12-foot field going over and under bars to ultimately place as many tri balls as possible into a goal. And whereas Team 21078A consisted of club president and team captain Frank Howell, club vice president Trinity Francis, club vice president Adish Catwell, and team members William Connor and Jack Mullins, they finished with a match ranking of 46 and a skill ranking of 25. And whereas Team 21078B consisted of team co-captain Jaden Alley, team co-captain Gunnar Newton, and team members Rose Calderon Aguilar, Tristan Johnson, Adam Jones, and S. Van Merstel, they finished with a match ranking of 55 and skills ranking of 29. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 14th day of May 2024, do hereby congratulate Havering Grace High School Gears and Robotics Club on their participation in the Maryland State Vex Robotics Competition.
I know we, as a council, love to be able to celebrate you all and the work that you've done. I know this is a year-long process to get ready. It starts last year when you found out what the competition was going to be and moved through the process. Personally, I got to be a witness to that work last year, last spring, seeing you all compete at the high school. And it's just, it's really cool, but it's also, I know, a lot of technical work, a lot of deep learning is involved to get to that point, because if it was up to me, I'm sure it would just be a pile of broken metal, like spinning on the ground in a circle. So it's very impressive, and it's really great to see what you all are capable of doing. And it's only the beginning. This program's going to continue to grow and expand, and I know there's great things ahead for all of you. So congratulations again from us on the council. Mr. Pennman, I know you got to see them compete.
Yes, congratulations. I saw firsthand of the robotics that you guys put together and challenged each other with. And I tell you, what we're looking for is economic development in our county and tech jobs, and what better training ground than the robotics field that you guys are entering? So congratulations. I look forward to seeing your future in Harford County and across our nation. So thank you so much.
I know we're going to hear from you soon.
Can we get a group photo real quick? Everybody in the front, can we just step this way a little bit? Keep coming until, all right, right there. And then, yeah, can you step this way just a bit? And then you as well, follow me on that end.
I'm not blocking anyone behind me.
Not a chance.
Got your thick heels on?
Okay.
All right. Agenda number five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. We have none. Six special presentations. Endstep High School Robotics Experience. We're going to welcome Sean Brofman, is it?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward, sir?
Just come in front here.
Sit right at that table, sir.
Seven, six.
Yes, sir.
I'm Sean Brofman, STEM project lead for Endstep today. We're going to go on a journey through the evolution and mission of Endstep, our achievements, and what lies ahead for us. Let's, first, we got to start at the beginning. So, all right. So in 2017, New Service Training Employment Program started as a, commenced as an ASVAB youth training, youth tutoring initiative. By 2018, we extended our reach to Harford County, focusing on GED and ASVAB tutoring. As we progressed into 2019, Endstep integrated job readiness training and employment services, along with STEM outreach to inspire middle school students. By the year 2020, it had marked a pivotal moment as we deployed the Career and Life Readiness Program, emphasizing STEAM career exposure and job readiness. Despite the challenges posed by the pandemic, in 2021, we planned a Youth STEAM Leadership Summit, connecting our employment partners with young adults and the community, which had been postponed from the previous year. In 2022, Endstep hosted its inaugural Career Expo, a testament to our growth and dedication. Building on that success, in 2023, we expanded our robotics program, fostering STEM education in Harford County and beyond. This year, 2024, we celebrate the completion of the Robotics Club competition year and prepare for our third annual Career Expo, spotlighting space exploration and STEAM summer programming. So our mission at Endstep is clear, to empower youth and young adults, particularly from low-income and minority backgrounds, by providing job readiness training, career planning pathways, and employment assistance. We offer a range of programs, STEAM engagement activities, GED, ASVAB tutoring, and college career readiness coaching. Our main initiative, the Career, Life, and Readiness Program, embodies our commitment to preparing individuals for tomorrow's career through planning and preparation. So here we have an example of our brochure for the Career, Life, Readiness Program, but I just want to bring your attention, it's a little difficult to see here, but we have four phases of the program. It's life skills training, job readiness training, job experience, and certification education. These are the pillars of the program. By building these skills and experiences, we prepare students for their futures. Endstep is governed by our board directors. Our board comes from a diverse demographics and occupations, and we're grateful for their support and nonprofit's dedication to the youth and young adults of our community. While Endstep is a small business, our nonprofit officers and volunteers are dedicated to the mission of aiding youth and young adults as they reach for their career and education goals. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Dot Hines for her support of the Havering Grace Robotics Club. Looking ahead, mark your calendars for our upcoming event, the 2024 Endstep Career Expo, scheduled for June 21, 2024, at Townsend University in northeastern Maryland. This year, STEAM focuses on space opportunities and environmental stability. Featuring renowned speaker Dr. Gary Kitmacher from NASA, our aim is to inspire students and connect them with diverse STEM career pathways. And we're also looking for funding and sponsors for this event. So let's delve into the MSDE Robotics Program. This initiative aims to cultivate critical robotics and engineering skills among high school students. We made significant strides with both 30 active students engaged in the robotics program at Havering Grace High School and our new club of six students at Joppa Town High School. And we're proud of both clubs and the success of reaching the state championships in robotics at Havering Grace High School. And also with their partnership with the Information Tech Oracle Academy for real-world app developments. And we're looking to expand and for more funding opportunities next year to add other schools to our robotics program. In conclusion, Endstep remains steadfast in our mission to equip youth and young adults with the tools they need to thrive in today's ever-evolving workforce. Through innovative programs, strategic partnerships, and commitment to excellence, we're shaping the future of tomorrow's leaders. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to continuing this journey together.
Sean, thank you for your presentation. As I look through your board of directors and your officers, I see a lot of people that we recognize and know and have known for quite some time. So I know you will be successful in this, for sure, just seeing who's attached to it. And you said there's a way to sponsor these events?
Yes. My boss, Sharon Jacobs, has a lot more information of that. So please feel free to reach out to her.
She's going to come to the microphone right now.
Yes, so on our website at instepforward.com, there's a link that you can click on to sponsor any of our programs, a donation link as well for our programs. You can also send a check to our office address as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's good to see you.
You as well, Pat.
Yep. Councilman? Mr. Pennman?
I just want to follow up and just congratulate the whole program, but Sean, you and Sharon, thank you, to you and your team, for allowing these kids to be able to flourish in this realm and succeed. So thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing what the program can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie. Also, thank you for working with Joppa Town High School, and we got students involved in it, and went over and talked to a few of them in the last couple of weeks, and they're very hot on the subject, and we expect it to grow in Joppa Town High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
For those who haven't experienced the robotics games, I think it'd be really worthwhile to describe in more detail what that looks like and what they do all year to get ready for those games, because I know it's unlike anything I ever experienced as a child, and I think it's worth, for the public at large, to hear about what that looks like.
Thank you.
Could you share, like, about this year's game?
Will one of you guys want to talk about, show your robot and what you've gone through? Come on, this is your time.
Yeah, so robotics is a multi-season sport, so we start in September.
Can you sit and talk in the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'd say point it right at me.
Yeah, so robotics is a multi-season sport. We start very beginning of the school year in September, and then we continue all the way through the state's competition in March. So lots of, lots of preparation goes into the construction of a bot. Through the summer, we plan, we design. The competitions are complex. It's not like soccer. You don't just kick the ball into the goal. There's a lot of intricate rules. There's a lot of creativity that comes into extracting every little bit of, like, advantage you can through the materials you've been given. Like I said, the competitions are complex, so if you want to see more, go to the Vex website or Google Vex Over/Under, or look for videos on YouTube, because the competitions, they're crazy. Seeing like two, four of these bots in a 12-by-12 field, go at it, absolutely insane. Some of you guys have seen it before. That's all I got.
Yeah, to add to, you know, Frank's enthusiasm, it's complex because both teams are vying for control of the field, you know, blocking each other off, moving their strategies in opposition to each other. So like, for example, I've seen Frank's robot effectively launch tri balls like, like, I don't know, how do you, how would you describe them?
Like a small, green, like, pyramid cube circle thing.
Yeah, and they're launched with such speed that there's like dozens of being moved across the 12 feet. So their strategies and other kinds of strategies, kind of like, what was that strategy that was referred to as like rolling across your robot to get it through?
Yeah, so we would, the one strategy was called bowling, where we would set this ball object on the, on top of them, on top of the robot, to quickly get a bunch into the field. And then our main strategy was to use, this is a catapult, so we would fling them across the field. We was flinging them like eight feet, like, shoot, 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 really fast, so.
So you have, you have robots quickly moving across the field, things flying through the air, students like yelling at each other to get on their strategies. It's so exciting, and I'm so happy that we, all our students have had the opportunity to be able to do these programs.
All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate you being here. Good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes. Board of Health update, spring 2024, May 7, 2024. Public hearing, May 7, 2024. Legislative Day 24-014, May 7, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the corrections or the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution 009-24, authorization for application to SSTAP. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 009-24.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 00924. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janger-Dano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Resolution 00924 is hereby approved. Mr. Janger-Dano, please read Bills 24-016 and Bill 24-017 into the record.
Bill 24-016, Charter Amendment, Article V, Budget and Finance, Section 512, as introduced by Councilmember Pennman, an act to propose an amendment to Article 5, Budget and Finance of Harford County Charter, as amended by repealing and reenacting with amendments, Section 512, action on the budget by the council to provide for ability of the county council to increase, decrease, or delete certain items in the proposed annual budget and to require the submission of this amendment to the legally qualified voters of Harford County for their adoption or rejection in accordance with Section 905 of Harford County Charter. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in these council chambers. Bond, I'm sorry, Bill 24-17, bond authorization as introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A bill to authorize and empower Harford County, Maryland, to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue and sell its bonds to other evidence of indebtedness leases, lease financing in amount not to exceed $16 million, $50,000 principal amount. The proceeds, therefore, to be used for the expansion, reconstruction, rehabilitation, renovation, and improvements of certain water and sewer project as described in the annual budget and appropriation ordinance. Bill number 24-14, as amended for the year ending June 30, 2025, and as described in this bill in accordance with Section 524 of the Charter of Harford County and Sections 123-40 and 256-26 of the Code of Harford County, or as otherwise permitted by law, authorizing the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, the county council, to adopt an administrative resolution that should provide for the form of instrument by which any indebtedness is to be evidenced, the manner by which bonds and any other indebtedness may be secured, to be evidenced, the manner by which bonds and any other indebtedness may be secured, and the rate, rates of interest to be paid, and generally for such other matters as may be deemed appropriate by the county council in connection therewith, and authorizing the county council by administrative resolution or the county executive, Harford County, Maryland, the county executive, to be executive order to determine the form of various documents as are necessary, desirable, to implement the financing authorized herein, the manner of issuance and delivery of any bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness, the payment of all necessary expenses in connection therewith, the method by which bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness shall be sold, maturity schedule and redemption provision, authorizing the appointment of certain agents and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness, providing that bonds or any other indebtedness shall be issued upon the full faith and credit and taxing power of Harford County, Maryland, providing for the issuance of bond anticipation notes or any other form of indebtedness upon adoption of an administrative resolution by the county council approving the interest rate or rates to be borne thereby for all, a portion of the projects described herein for which the proceeds of sale of the bond anticipation notes shall be used, providing that after the issuance of the bond anticipation notes or other form of indebtedness or any renewal thereof, the county council shall authorize the issuance of bonds to pay said bond anticipation notes or other form of indebtedness, providing that the written recommendation of the county executive and administrative resolution of the county council, all or a portion of the indebtedness authorized herein may be incurred pursuant to loans from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration, providing for disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of bonds or other indebtedness authorized herein, and for the levying of charges, assessments, and all taxes necessary to provide payment of the principal and premium, if any, and interest on bonds or any other form of indebtedness, providing that certain additional matters may be determined by resolution of the county council or may be reserved unto the county executive as prescribed by such resolution, providing the method of fixing the interest rates to be borne by such bonds, and generally providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith, and generally relating to funding of the project described herein. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in these council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read in amendments 15 to 20 to Bill 24-009, zoning cannabis dispensary.
Amendments 15-20 to Bill 24-009, zoning cannabis dispensary. Amendment number 15 on page three and line one, strike A. Amendment number 16 on page three and line three, strike A. Amendment number 17 on page three and line four, strike A. Amendment number 18 on page four and line 12, strike A. Amendment number 19 on page four and line 14, strike A. Amendment number 20 on page four and line 15, strike A.
And then, if you would please, we are going to act on these amendments this evening along with the other amendments, so please, may I have a motion on amendments 1 through 20 to Bill 24-009?
Council President, I move to approve amendments 1 through 20 on Bill 24-009.
Mr. President, have a question?
Mr. Guthrie?
What's 1 through 20? Is this 15 through 20?
No, sir, it'll be 1 through 20 because we introduced other amendments last week.
Okay.
Mr. Jan Giordano, you have a question?
Yes, Council President. I need to, I'd like to separate out amendments 1 through 8 of Bill 24-009.
Thank you. So, therefore, we are going to have a motion on amendments 2 through 7 and 9 through 20. May I have that motion?
Council President, I move to approve amendments 2 through 7 and 9 through 20.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve amendments 2 through 7, 9 through 20 for Bill 24-009. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I just thought it'd be good maybe to have discussion about why we're not going to vote on amendments 1 and 8, and also what impact there is, if there is any, on us not voting on those, because I know that they are dictated by state law. Do you have any comment for?
Do you have any comments?
Yeah. On amendments 1 through 8, they take, 1 and 8, they take the, the distance from 1,000 feet down to 500 feet, where I cannot approve that. I know that's state legislation, but also liquor laws do not allow 500 feet, they're at 1,000 feet, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve that, even though it's on, even though that's from the state, I'm gonna, I'm gonna deny that, that from the state, and I'm not going to approve that amendments.
Yep. And just to add to that, if we don't vote on it, it still effectively becomes law, but we're just not taking a stance of approval as a council. Is that my correct understanding?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And then, I understand where you're coming from on that. I, I think, I wish I knew why the state made that decision to go from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. But I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were doing by not voting on those amendments.
And thank you for that clarification.
And my understanding is, if we don't vote on it, then it stays at 1,000 feet, not, and it doesn't move it to 500 feet.
Do you have any clarification with Council?
I, I don't, I have not read anything on it, what it says, state requirement.
Yeah.
And they've occupied the field, they, they're supposed to be required. But again, I haven't read the bill or any of the background information.
Fair enough.
Mr. Richardson, do you have any background information as someone who's worked at the state level on how that works if we don't vote on those amendments?
The one concern I could see off the top of my head would be if, in the future, if there's an attempt by Harford County...
Can you bring that mic closer?
If there's an attempt by Harford County to enforce the 1,000-foot mark, when in fact the state is 500, that could raise an issue for litigation.
Mr. Penn?
I would agree with Councilman Giandridano. I think this is a dangerous precedent to set. I understand it might be grandstanding. I understand the state legislation might supersede this, but I would agree with him that I just don't want to be complicit in it. And therefore, if it gets passed, it gets passed, but it won't be with, with my vote, yes, so.
Thank you. Mr. Guthrie?
And I stand on the same thing. Remember, all these amendments are here, they are basically coming from the county executive, but he's forced to bring these amendments to us because of the state, but I really don't care, I don't understand why it even has to come in front of us if our vote doesn't mean anything. It's like a rubber stamp, so. I had, and I've told other council members early on that anything to do with marijuana, they can talk, they say cannabis, because I guess they didn't want to say marijuana. I don't know why, but I will either abstain or vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? So, just to be clear, the motion is to move amendments 2 through 7, 9 through 20. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Dixon, call or roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Penn?
This is 2 through 7, 9 through 20.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, one in a negative, amendments 2 through 7, 9 through 20 to Bill 24-009 are hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read amendments 1 through 7 to Bill 24-15, 015, into the record for introduction, please.
Amendments 1 through 7 to Bill 24-15, paying classification plan. Amendment number 1, on the cover page in the introductory paragraph, line 2, strike ordinance and substitute bill. Amendment number 2, on the cover page in the introductory paragraph, line 3, strike ordinance and substitute bill. Amendment number 3, on page 1 and line 2, strike ordinance and substitute bill. Amendment number 4, on page 1 and line 4, strike ordinance and substitute bill. Amendment number 5, on page 13 and line 20, strike ordinance and substitute bill. Amendment number 6, on page 13 and line 20, strike June 2024 and substitute June 21st, 2024.
Thank you. 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 24-010, floodplain management, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 24-010.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to approve Bill 24-010. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penn?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, Bill 24-010 is hereby approved. 12, enrollment of bills. Bill 24-010, floodplain management is hereby certified as the text finally passed. 13, unfinished business, we have none. 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President, there is no one signed up.
Thank you. 16, business from council members. Mr. Bennett?
Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm glad that you're here. Just want to share a little bit of what we've been up to in the past week. I attended the Abingdon Bell Camp Perryman Cab meeting, which is always a good opportunity to interact with the public. I encourage everybody who might be watching at home or in the room to find out what your local cab meeting is and attend. They're really a great opportunity to learn more about different departments within the county and to have a real back-and-forth conversation, not limited to three minutes at a time. I also attended the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Joshua Easton, and that was a really great opportunity to celebrate some of our youth who's accomplished incredible, incredible feat of becoming an Eagle Scout. I want to congratulate the New Route 40 Business Association Executive Committee and thank the outgoing officers for all the work they do supporting our local businesses across Route 40. And then also, I just want to take a moment to recognize the Richland Ballroom that I think very surprisingly and suddenly to all of us recently closed their doors. I also want to thank all the local businesses that are helping step in to keep events that are planned coming up to still happen at different places and centers. I know the Richland Ballroom has been cornerstone for many organizations and many events, from Hartford Leadership Academy, to Voices of Hope, to so many others that have used that place for their events over the years, so it's sad to see it close. And lastly, I just want to say happy birthday to my wife, Abby, who's hopefully not watching this, hopefully is enjoying time with her family tonight. But, you know, another year together, another year of growing older, and she's still young, and I'm still the one getting old, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, good evening. I would like to express my appreciation for the emails I've been receiving regarding the Harford County Library budget. I have taken note of each email, and I'm giving thoughtful consideration to everyone. On that note, the Harford County Public Library Foundation is hosting the Taste of Harford By-Local Taste Local event, and it will be held Sunday, May 19, from 1 to 4 at Vinion Manor Farm, and I hope to see you there. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Riley?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the Galbreth family on their celebration of their 100th anniversary of Fallen Branch Farm. The farm's been handed down through generations, carrying on its legacy, focusing on hog farming and then transitioning to a dairy that's now cultivated hops and pumpkins to complement its farm brewing operation. It's currently owned by Alan and Kim Galbreth, and we're wishing them continued success. I had the privilege of participating in Police Week, the reef lane ceremony here in front of the administration, and I appreciate all the brave, appreciate all the brave men and women who have given their lives in service to this county and also to this state. And lastly, our prayers go out to Jeff and Tricia and the Vincenti family, and especially Jake. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. My office attended a ribbon cutting for a Roder family law on South Hickory Avenue. Also, I attended the Patriot Assembly for Red Pump Elementary. They had 639 patriots, kindergarten through fifth, fifth grade. I want to thank Principal Blaney-Hawley. I think it's the largest Patriot Assembly that I attend. On May 8, I toured Aberdeen Proving Ground with Economic Development Advisory Board. One of the things we, we did get to see was the biomanufacturing and how they've upgraded that and, and expanding that program. I think they spent some, the federal government spent some like 40 million to upgrade, upgrade that so that they use chemicals, not chemicals, they use plant-based products to create products instead of petroleum-based. So, it's a, it's an emerging industry, and the federal government's putting a lot of money into that, and hopefully that'll provide benefits for the private sector here. I attended the ARX NRC Gala on Friday night, I think along with Dion, and I'm not sure who else was there, but Jacob, were you there?
I wasn't able to make it this year.
Okay. Laying wreaths for the fallen heroes yesterday. And then last night, after our meeting, I attended the Society of Italian-American Businessmen Scholarship Dinner, where they gave out, I think it was a total of six scholarships. I'm not sure the dollar amount, but, so I want to congratulate all the scholarship winners for that. And finally, Harford Community College, they won their second straight junior college lacrosse championship with a 16-6 win over CCBC of Essex, and I want to congratulate Aaron Verratti on his second win in a row. So, thank you, Council President, and I also hope Big Jake is, does well, and can't wait to see him smiling and joking and laughing.
Oh, absolutely. Hopefully it won't be too long. Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Penn?
Yeah, I want to start with, I want to express that, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with the Vincenti family and Jake and his full recovery, and if there's anything that I, you need from me, don't hesitate to reach out. The next thing I want to discuss is kind of a critical budget issue that was brought to my attention, also Councilman Bennett's attention, and it's about the stipends for the volunteer fire companies. When the EMS programs were taken over by the county, each of the fire companies were given a stipend. That stipend was to help with the lack of funds or budget that they would have based off the lack of the EMS billing that they would not be able to bring forward. To my knowledge, those stipends were promised over the course of four years. They originally, last year was the first stipend, and in this budget, there is no stipends in there. Now, when we spoke to the association, they said they didn't need the stipend. They have since clarified that they weren't, weren't sure of that. Myself and Jacob Bennett, Councilman Bennett, excuse me, met with Abingdon Fire Company that acknowledged that they do, in fact, need the stipends. And since then, we've reached out to several other fire companies that also expressed concern over not receiving those stipends. So, if we do not acknowledge this problem and find a solution to this problem, it could send the volunteer fire company on a road that we cannot afford. The Harford County government cannot afford the fire companies. That's over $100 million operation. These volunteer fire programs in our county are, are great. They're not only just, you know, a community bonding building, area building, but they also provide vital services at very low cost to Harford County. And I'm afraid that if we do not fund them in a way that we should, then we're setting them up for failure to where the county's going to have to adopt them at some point, and I hope that is not the strategy that's taking place. So, I look forward to working with the administration, my council colleagues, to make sure we acknowledge this problem and find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn and Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also, best wishes to Squat, to Jake and your family. Told my wife and all, they, they both said a prayer on his behalf. Last Wednesday, I attended Route 40 Business Association Luncheon at Van Diver Inn in Havert Grace, and the speaker was our president. What's your last name? Oh, Italian guy, Vincenti. He did a good job. He did a great job bringing everything forward with everything we got on our plate right now, talking... Havity Grace, and the speaker was our president. What's your last name? Oh, Italian guy, Vincenti. He did a good job, he did a great job bringing everything forward with everything we got on our plate right now, talked about the, the money we need for the budget and where we need it, and I think he put a, made a good presentation for both ends of it. And the magnet schools in my area, particularly in Joppetown and Edgewood, I presented some citations. I had to deliver them because I had to get back in time for the public hearing, so I couldn't give them out to them, but our Homeland Security and our Emergency Preparedness and our Academy of Finance, all three of those magnet schools, I was glad to get the, my council citation to them. On last Thursday, I met with Dr. Austin Hill and Councilman Bennett in his office to discuss some Southern County workforce opportunities that Dr. Hill had some ideas of, and then I expect we'll be going forward to some of those ideas. Also attended the Abingdon Community Center Meeting. I got a couple, a couple of them called me from there, asked me to come to the meeting also to discuss my 20-acre bill because they've got the same situation there with the Abingdon Forest area where there's 300 acres, not 100, some acres like, like the mess we have on 152. And what did they do? They cleared 70 acres there. And, and guess what? It was a big mistake, they weren't supposed to do that, and we're going to get more information on how all that happened, and now they want the county to reforestation the whole 70 acres that they screwed up. I don't know whether that, why that should be, expense at, that Harford County should do it, I think whoever helped clear those 70 acres, and I'm doing some checking on to find all that out in the first place. However, if the 20-acre requirement was in there, that mistake wouldn't have been 70 acres, it would have been 20 acres, a lot, something you could, a lot, you could handle it a lot better. Article was in the May 10 issue of the EJES on the front page about the, about my bill, and the headline is Guthrie Proposes Bill to Reduce Settlement Runoff. So if you haven't seen the May 10 article on that, it'll get, that'll explain it a lot clearer. On Friday, I also, Tony says, I attend the ARC Gala, also, I want to say County Executive was there also, and what, they did a, that had an auction fundraiser for people to try to contribute money because they wanted to raise at least $50,000 to buy, to buy a new home because they have a lot of people on waiting lists and they need another home, and of course, a lot of you know, my grandson is, is in one of the ARC facilities here in Bel Air. And they not only raised the 50, they started like $5,000 and find out who wants to bid that, and goes all the way down to where I've got a better chance, you know, 150, $50 level, $500 level, I should say. And what was impressive, they raised actually up to almost, I think around $70,000, and then there was an anonymous person in the audience who matched it. So it doubled the amount of money that they raised for that new facility, they went for the ARC, so. Very happy to attend that, it was enjoyable and it was, it was crowded, it was a lot of people there, so they, they did very well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, thank you. Agenda Number 15, business from the President. I need to advertise our adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board meeting, which is going to be Wednesday, June 5, 6 p.m., second floor conference room here in the council building. I too attended the Route 40 Business Association Luncheon. I want to congratulate Robert Andrews as the new president, incoming president, but also want to recognize and thank Leslie Stein for her several years of leadership there, she's done an outstanding job growing that organization. Also want to congratulate the Charlie Riley, Charlie Riley Foundation for their golf tournament this past Friday at Geneva Farm. I mean, they were all troopers, standing out in the rain, trying to raise money for scholarships, they did a, they did an outstanding job. Also, Ms. Harris represented me in our office at the ARC Northern Chesapeake Gala, and she told me it was a great event, raised a lot of money, and they always do an outstanding job there for sure. And then finally, well actually not finally, I want to thank Ms. Herbeck again for stepping up and sitting here with us this evening. I told you there might be a question you may have to address, even though you didn't have the answer, you were still here, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with you into the future. But on behalf of my daughter, Trish, and her husband, Jeff, Staniford, I want to thank all of you for the prayers, calls, messages, checking on our grandson, Jake. He has a long road of recovery ahead of him, and we're taking it step by step and day by day. We know he's getting the absolute best care possible by an amazing team at Hopkins Pediatric Intensive Care Unit. All of us are so thankful for everyone's kindness, prayers, and generosity and well wishes. Just a quick update, he was in surgery today for four hours and is recovering from that and doing as well as can be expected, so I want to thank all of you for your thoughts and prayers, and when I say all of you, it's amazing how many people have called and sent their well wishes. So thanks again, and with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.